I didn't want this big pile. I skipped it. I sent two. I don't, the PO that US jet, they sent us a second notice pass due thing. The PO that they referenced was a Fairgrounds PO. It wasn't even a US jet PO. So I sent it to both you guys. If you guys will check to see what is still out there and maybe in this pile. I'll try to watch for US jet if it is that amount and I'll reply back to them who are paying it today. Hey ma'am, how are you?
Good.
How are you? Cold this morning.
I know.
Does anyone know where that ladder goes to? Get it out here and get the bus clean back up. I don't know where it went to. Did your guys get it locked or?
I don't know.
Go ask your guys. I can take it back down, but I don't know where it came from or where it goes. I know Jennifer's gonna try to have that class in here if her cables come in today. Everything that was supposed to be delivered Friday was moved back today. So I assume things that was supposed to be delivered today will be moved back, but I haven't seen an email on that one.
[inaudible]
You're needing one for a gift drop, you said?
Yeah, is that one?
Seven hundred and thirteen dollars.
No, this one was a thousand something. I don't remember what it was.
Oh, here's another one.
I said the PO that they referenced was an US jet PO.
My machine.
Print language from EMS, emergency management, jet responders, District Two, District Three, Sheriff in County Dome.
Copies to copy. Copies are gonna throw me off.
They do us too. Who remember and who needs a copy? Who doesn't need a copy?
Motion for a reply. We'll cross the permit. Off the officer.
I'm on the officer reports from the court clerk, court clerk preservation, the treasurer and election board.
Motion for a motion for the officer's report. One more second. There it is. Protection transfer election board, thirty fifty bucks.
I got their precinct officer out of their full time instead of their part time. It's the one we had on our last weekend.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer. Open an award six months later.
Sign right there by me, Mike.
Yeah, there's my team of them. I think I saw already that there was that number on this one.
Just one bit.
Make sure that. Hey, you don't remember anybody coming in last weekend getting a bid with back ten, did you? Yeah, we had a surplus bid that was over there on the, okay. I didn't either. I was just double checking to make sure they didn't come in on my own break or something. All right, thank you. No, I got it. No, I've got it. I just was making sure. Thank you.
All right, overland.
Over there?
Overland. Urban. Here we see that we more than half. Bird bank materials.
That's what I wanted to.
This is Hobson's. Jibbin' it up dark here. Uh, our first. Closing down the asshole. Uh, don't you know. It's a. The boss. Independence work flows. Bright asshole. You want this?
Yeah, press door.
Hmm?
If you press door, then it only comes. It doesn't like it, but yeah. I'm sorry.
Bill, what you see?
Yeah, you got mine. I actually put it on the end and the alba and all of that, but we haven't really gotten.
Favorite item.
No, we need to make a motion to accept them and award them.
No, that's true. I'll make a motion to accept bids. And bill with the next one, second. Favorite item. Open an award bid for surplus ten Fairgrounds.
That's what I was just double checking. No bids were submitted. So.
The top shot can answer or talk to you about that?
That's what I was just calling. Nobody came into my office and said anything. I gave out one to one person, but they didn't submit it or something. And it was, it was in the paper. So I guess we need to make the motion if no bids submitted and then make them go to the next step.
I like the motion. One second. All right. Oklahoma Central Workforce Development Board.
What do you get it?
No, it's Northwest Oklahoma Workforce Development. They got merged with Central Oklahoma. They're making one now. Oh, I'd sit on unless anybody else wants to. Sounds good.
I don't think they're gonna fight you over that.
Except if anybody else wants to, I will let them. Just think you get a deal. I want this one. About that one, crap. And they already scheduled their meetings right at noon. I'll fill out all that later.
Fill it out. You signed that in, fill it out?
Yeah. I wasn't reading the other side. Oh, make a motion for. One second. Favorite item. Resolution for Fair Board Election filing period.
Like I said, our filing, I'm sorry.
They need that email by today.
Do you have it for two? You want me to send it to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Whatever. They can send me, I can send it to them or whatever you want.
Okay, they can get it by tomorrow then.
Our filing period will be January 12th through the 16th. That's five consecutive days. If there needs to be an election, it will be the next Tuesday, which is actually a Monday, because that Monday is a holiday, but that's still the time I can do it. For January 20th, if there's an election. We'll print this in the paper for three times and.
They sign all these?
Uh.
There's like four copies. We get to sign all of them?
Oh, those are my old ones. I just copied off my old ones. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
So I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I just.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
December calendar so that I know what it is.
Request from an account for COA, Sheriff's Funding Grant.
Um, I have repeatedly, and we'll go over this in the officer meeting also. Those capital outlay accounts, we really need to start watching what we're spinning out of those and that stuff. And then he has, you know, applied for that safe grant. And so I asked him specifically what accounts he wants that safe grant to come out of. He tells me it is overtime only, so we just created the account for personal services. That funding agreement where he got the hundred and fifty thousand last year, he has applied for the hundred and fifty thousand this year. He keeps getting little things out of that capital outlay and I'm just like, guys, we just cannot do that. So I asked him what else he wanted to create and he wanted to create both accounts, the personal services and the MNO on that one. So there it is. I, I don't think he should be able to have the personal services on that hundred and fifty thousand because he's never said that he. I have not seen a list from what he applied for this year. You know, we applied, we, we sent that list through last year and there was no personal services on it this year. I did not see the list. I know he's, has sent through what he's gonna apply for, but I did not see that. So that's just my two cents there. Now, the safe.
Isn't that grant supposed to be, I mean, some, is it supposed to be used for personal services?
He can use it for personal services, but that is not what we agreed to last year. Like I said, this year I never seen the list of what he applied for. But that safe grant is only supposed to be used for overtime, so I have, we are just creating it for the personal services account, which is gonna be, hey Ken, they will basically have to submit two payrolls then. They'll have to submit the regular payroll out of, out of his cash account or out of his county general account. And then any overtime, they're gonna have to create another, but that one's only twenty thousand, so I'm not too worried on that one. The other one's a hundred and fifty thousand.
So they'll be issuing too many checks.
Yeah. And we can't get turned in. I don't know nothing. Yeah.
However, I guess. I'll make a motion to approve. I hear, I... Back for District Two, I'm a one. What's called? Twenty thousand dollars.
Mike, I didn't just say it.
I'll make a motion for a transfer. One second. Alphatack County EMS requests Alphatack County Commissioners to reappoint Northern Ricky for a five-year term. I'll make a motion to approve the request. I forgot to use that.
This one.
Oh, did I... Oh, Alphatack Purchase Card. Trying to get there.
I know.
Seen business number. I'll...
Two copies of that.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase card.
That again is just the payments that went through this month. I actually was on time and remembered that. I missed it by a week. But anyway, that's for November. So that was the payments that went through and we balance good with the...
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for District Two, private property.